I know that one of the people asked me if I could go over, I don't know if he's gonna be here or not, but he asked me about Mills. So we can talk about Mills. I don't know, I think we've all kind of done Mills, but but kind of to like review Mills one more time.
Yeah, that would be great.
So. I had one question on my exam. Um, and I don't know how to word it, but it basically was like, if you have three houses priced at this, what is the comparable? It was like seventy-two, five hundred, seventy-three thousand. And I just, I can't remember the exact question, but I was stumped.
So like, was it asking you to make an adjustment to a comparable, maybe?
Maybe. I wish I could find the exact question.
Hold on, let me do a whiteboard of it. So like, you guys see the whiteboard, okay?
Yep.
Okay. So like, basically, like, here's your subject house. Right? And then it says like, here's like three comps, right? One, two, three. And the subject house has three bedrooms, two baths. I'm oversimplifying here, but let's say the subject property has three bedrooms, two baths, and the, the appraiser determines that a bathroom is worth, I don't know, let's say ten grand to make the math easy, okay? So if this house was three bedroom, one bath, this house was three bedroom, two baths, and this house was three bedroom, one bath, and this one sold for three hundred, this one sold for three twelve, and this one sold for, I don't know, say three oh one. So because these two are inferior to the subject, see what I'm saying? Because they have a lower bathroom count, we have to give them a positive adjustment. So since we know a bathroom is worth ten thousand dollars, we would add ten thousand dollars here. We'd leave this one alone because it's the same, basically. And then we'd add ten thousand dollars to this one. So the adjusted price of this one would be three eleven. The adjusted price of this one would be three ten. So if they said comp A, what would the adjusted price be? Be three ten. Do you see why?
Yes, okay. That does help me understand that one better.
And you know, I think we all probably know the story of Robin Hood, although sometimes I ask some of like these super, super, super straight out of high school students, they have never heard Robin Hood. But if you've heard the story of Robin Hood, hopefully we all have. Robin Hood robs from the rich and he gives to the poor, right?
Yes.
The idea, the memory trick for this appraisal thing is that he robs from the rich and he gives to the poor. So since this one is poor, it's inferior compared to the subject, we would give to it. We would give it a positive adjustment. This one's poor because it has less than the subject we would give to it. But like, say this was a three bedroom, three bath. Well, then we would take from it because it's superior. We would make a negative ten thousand dollar adjustment. So we make negative adjustments if the comp is superior. We make positive adjustments if the comp is inferior because we have to give to the poor and rob from the rich. So that's kind of like it does. That was a memory trick my Florida teacher taught me, and I thought that was a pretty good one. Like, it helps me remember and keep them straight. And like, in real life, y- your comps would have, so you would have some positive comps, you would have, or you would have some superior situations, you would have some inferior, like say, like my neighbor's house next door, it has a smaller square footage, but maybe it has a bigger garage. So I'd be both making both positive and negative adjustments because we're gonna do a bunch of different adjustments based on different factors. But for the purposes of the test, they're probably not going to get that deep. It's just gonna be adjusting one thing usually. Or maybe two. They're not gonna get too crazy with it. All right. Oh, there he is. Mister Mills. Let's tell him we'll do Mills next. So let him get logged in real quick. And then we'll start talking about those mill questions. So that's one of the appraisal topics. Hey Manny, we were, you haven't missed anything. We were just talking a little bit about appraisal, but I was just telling him I was gonna do Mills because you had asked me about Mills earlier.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna do. Yeah.
Okay, sweet.
So Samantha and Tara and Brandon are um, working on their test too. So this Manny, he's joined us too. So basically Mills, let's talk about that real quick. So like, if I said that a property has a tax assessed value, because we want to use tax assessed values for the Mills because it's about taxes. Say that the property has a tax assessed value of four hundred thousand dollars. And there, there's a um, tax levy on the ballot. And it's just for schools, maybe, for school, school levy, we'll call it. Okay? And so the school levy, the proposed school levy is for ten Mills in this example. And the question might be, how much will, will this tax levy increase the taxes, increase the property taxes of this property? No, I can't type tonight. So how much will the tax levy increase the property taxes, this four hundred thousand dollar property? So we look at it like this, a mill is one one thousandth of a dollar. Now, a math teacher would tell you to do this in a very complicated way, but Maria says do things the easy way. So here's how I do it, and it always works. You take the tax assessed value, or whatever number they want you to work with, whatever value they want you to work with, and because a mill is one one thousandth of a dollar, I just take the number. So here it's four hundred thousand because that's the value. I divide it by a thousand. So four hundred thousand divided by a thousand is four hundred, right? Like, am I losing my mind? I gotta check this. It's like four hundred thousand divided by a thousand. Just make sure I'm not losing it. It goes four hundred, yeah. So then you, once you get that number, once you take the as the, the value that they want you to work with, the tax assessed value usually, and you divide it by a thousand bucks, you get that number, and then you multiply it by the number of Mills from the problem. And here it's ten Mills, so we would multiply that by ten. So four hundred times ten, this tax levy would cost this person four thousand dollars of additional taxes a year. Does that make sense to everybody? So just take your, look for that tax assessed value. Yeah, sorry. Um, if you look for that tax assessed value, and then you're going to, um, you're gonna divide it by a thousand, and then multiply it by the number of Mills. The big thing to watch is sometimes they'll give you the true value of the house and the tax assessed value. Don't use the true value. If there's a choice there, always go for that tax assessed value because like, not everywhere is like this, but most places, your true value of your house is gonna be more than your tax assessed value. Okay? So watch for that. Um, another thing I would tell everybody to, to practice on math, and Manny and I did amortization today, but is to go back over those amortization problems. Yeah, I wish I could think of that question that we had. Was it like, let's see, let's see if we could do it again. So it was like, um.
Seven percent. You want me to read it?
Yeah, read it. Let's type it out. He had a good one, and we'll go through this one because this was a good review.
It's gone in a book.
This is from his PSI book he was.
Okay, it is, uh, just had it too. Oh, it's in this book. Okay, here it goes. How much total? Do you want me to do a different one?
Let's do that one again. Let's see if you remember it. I'll put you on the spot.
Oh, I remember that one.
Pick a different one then.
I got a, I got a different one. I got a different one. A buyer, a buyer finds a house and needs and, and yeah, and needs uh, two hundred thousand dollars in order to afford the transaction.
Okay.
Period. If the buyer qualifies for a thirteen hundred P I payment and the current interest rate is seven percent, again, um, amorti- 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 amortized over thirty years uh, in a six point six five factor.
Six point six five factor?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Uh, so the question is, how much money is the buyer eligible to borrow? Well, that's the one, that's the one we did.
Yeah, but that's okay because it's a good one to go back over again. Let's change the numbers a little bit. Let's change the numbers. Let's make it, he qualifies for two thousand. So you don't remember this one. And his interest, and his, we'll leave everything else the same. Okay, so I'm gonna change the number a little bit on you so you don't just memorize the question. So I think Tara and I did this too. So Tara, remember when we were doing the amortization table?
Yes.
Okay, so what this question is, it's not using the amortization table. Basically, this is the number from the table, and they're just giving it to you.
Yes.
Right? So basically what we're doing here is we're saying, okay, he's got a, he needs to, to buy a house for two hundred thousand dollars. He qualifies for a two thousand dollar. Maybe I made that too high. Let me change that because that might not work mathematically. Let's how'd I do that? That was bad. Let's change it. Let's change it to fourteen hundred dollars. How's that? We're gonna pretend that this says fourteen hundred because I'm afraid I made it too high.
Oh, Maria.
Yeah.
Sorry to cut you off, but the, the last part is say round to the nearest dollar, of course.
Okay, so we'll round up on it. So we'll pretend his payment's gonna be fourteen hundred. So that's his P and I payment. Now, remember, we have his payment here, right? We have his payment. It's fourteen hundred dollars a month. And his factor is six point six five. That's the number from the chart. We need to find out his loan amount, don't we? So this is just like that amortization chart. We take the actual P and I payment, and we're gonna divide it by the factor, six dollars and sixty-five cents. Because he has, for every thousand dollars that he borrowed, remember, he has to pay back six dollars and sixty-five cents a month. Just like that chart. So we're gonna say, okay, he's bar- his payment's fourteen hundred. I gotta use my calculator here. His payment's fourteen hundred. We're gonna divide it by the six point six five that they've already given us from the chart. And you guys, I'll give you guys a second to do that. So, he, we get two ten point five two. Did everybody get that? Remember, what do we do with this, this number? He basically, he borrowed a thousand dollars, two hundred and ten times, right? So we're gonna multiply that by a thousand dollars. And we get oops. Two hundred and ten thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. So he's qualifying for this. He can borrow two hundred and ten dol- two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. That's how much he's eligible to borrow. So he's good on his two hundred thousand dollar house, right? So he can borrow two ten, five twenty. The other one that we, let me pull up a different. Does everybody follow that, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know that's like, it's kind of confusing, but I'm gonna switch gears. I'm gonna pull up a different. I wanna show you guys a different question real quick. This was let me find um, let's do one more math question that I did not, I don't think I've done with anybody here yet. So I wanna show that to you guys. Was it? Yeah, taxes. So let's do another one of those mill taxes. I wanna find a certain kind of question. Okay. So a property is valued at two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and it's taxed at forty-seven Mills. The assessment rate on the property is thirty-two percent. Remember that tax assessment thing that we were talking about? And they want us to calculate the yearly taxes. So we know the true value is two thirty-five. But what do we need? The tax assessed value, right?
Yep.
Gotta have that tax assessed value. And the tax assessed value is thirty-two percent of the total value. That's what this question is telling me. So the assessment rate on the property is thirty-two percent. In other words, if I'm gonna calculate what the tax assessed value is, I take the true value, the two thirty-five, and I'm gonna find thirty-two percent of that to get my tax assessed value. So I'm gonna put in my calculator, two hundred and thirty-five thousand times thirty-two percent, because remember, I'm trying to find thirty-two percent of something. I'm gonna multiply there. And so my tax assessed value is seventy-five thousand, two hundred bucks. Now, I'm not done though. Now I've got my tax assessed value, but I'm only halfway there. Because now, to calculate my Mills, and remember, once I get my tax assessed value, and I'm dealing with Mills, I'm gonna divide that by a thousand because remember, Mills are one one thousandth of a dollar.
Oh.
Buy that by a thousand. And I get seventy-five point two. And I'm not done yet because how many Mills am I doing here? Forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
So seventy-five point two times forty-seven. And I get three thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars. That's how they might present an actual Mills question to you on the test. So don't skip over that part where we have to get the tax assessed value and just use the real value. We gotta remember to find that tax assessed value if they're asking us to do that.
I wish.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, I did get it and stuff. Uh, so, so two hundred and thirty-five thousand uh, times uh, um, of course, thirty-two percent with point three two percent, and then you said, then a hundred?
Oh, those are one one thousandth of a dollar. So once we get the tax assessed value, we're gonna divide it by a thousand dollars.
Oh, okay, divided by.
And then, we're gonna multiply that by whatever number of Mills they're telling me to use here, and it's forty-seven.
Okay, gotcha.
Let's do one more of those.
Can you write it out? Well.
Oh, shoot. I skipped over it. Yeah. Hold on, let me, let me put that out on the screen.
I get it though. I, I did.
You do? Okay, good. I'll put it on the whiteboard real quick so you guys can see. So basically, what we're, what the question was doing there, and I'll just draw it out. So the property is valued at two hundred and thirty-five thousand, and it's taxed at forty-seven Mills. The assessment rate on the property is thirty-two percent. So what we're gonna do is take that, two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, it's.
Okay, two hundred and thirty-five thousand. And we're gonna divide that num- or we're, sorry, we're gonna multiply that by thirty-two percent. Okay? And that's gonna give us our tax assessed value. I don't remember what that number was. Seventy-five thousand two hundred, okay. Seventy-five thousand two hundred. Okay, and then because Mills are one one thousandth of a dollar, we're gonna take that seventy-five thousand two hundred. We're gonna divide it by.
Five thousand. Okay, that's.
Yeah. And then we're gonna get uh, seventy-five point two, is that right, guys? All this in my head, I can't. Seventy-five thousand two hundred divided by one thousand. Yep. And then we're gonna multiply that number.
By forty-seven.
By forty-seven because that's the number of Mills, and that gives us our that gives us our tax assessed value, three.
Three fifty-three.
Yeah, and then we round up. Yep. So that's our annual taxes here.
And if we round up, we would take out the forty cent, right?
Yeah, we would just make it, uh, if they're saying to round up to the next dollar, then we would be thirty-five, thirty-five.
Okay, sweet.
Hey Heather, if you, if you wanna ask us anything or whatever, feel free to unmute. I just know that there was like some background noise. So like, yeah, you don't need to stay muted. I just was because we were talking.
Sorry about that. I didn't want you to think I was like mute.
No, no, you, I should because I was talking. I'm so sorry.
It's okay, it's okay. I'm just saying, like, if you, if you wanna unmute and you holler at us, no problem. We're not like all on mute or anything like that. It's, it's like, so yeah. No problem. Okay, so um, then the next thing I would say, let's find another one, one more Mills one like that. Um, that's good to, okay. This is kind of like that same last question. So a property is appraised at three hundred and seventy-five thousand, and it's assessed for tax purposes at fifty-six percent of the value. Calculate the annual taxes if the Mills total sixty-one. So, what's our first step, you guys? What do we do first?
Three hundred and seventy-five thousand times point.
Yep. Yep, times point five six. There you go. So we got two hundred and ten thousand dollars is the tax assessed value. Right? So we've got the tax assessed value of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. We're good to go for Mills. Next up, what do we do? Am I cheating? What do we do with our two hundred and ten thousand?
We multiply that uh, by a thousand? Divided by thousand, my bad.
Yeah, divided by a thousand, so now we're at two ten.
And then multiply by sixty-one?
Yeah, because that's our number of Mills, times sixty-one. Now I'm gonna tell you, so the answer is twelve thousand eight hundred and ten. I'm gonna tell you guys something else to watch out for that is a common trick on the test. They'll get you to do all this stuff, and instead of asking you for the annual taxes, they'll say, what are the monthly taxes? Don't forget to divide by twelve. Right?
We did that one today. Did one like that today.
Yeah. Exactly, exactly. Now, I think I've gone over and we're just kind of rolling with math here, but like, if anybody has anything they want me to talk about besides math, jump in. But like, I know math, everybody always forgets. Yeah. Okay. So. Heather, did you have a question? Somebody said I had a question, or was it Samantha? I couldn't tell who was. Somebody say they had.
Oh, no, not me.
Oh, sorry. I don't know. If you have one, holler at me. So what is the commission rate on a sale of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars if the total commission paid was eighty-one hundred dollars? I don't think I've done this with you guys, any of you guys before. So, what do you guys think? How would we solve this? It's easier than it looks, I promise. So when you're trying to find the percentage of commission, all you do is take the commission amount, the eighty-one hundred dollars, or whatever the number is, and divide it by the sales price.
Oh, okay, that's it?
Yep. So you just take eighty-one hundred divided by one thirty-four. So it's commission amount divided by sales price equals percentage.
Maria, remember we were talking about the T-bar, the T, what is it called? The T-bar?
Yeah.
And honestly, I don't like that method for anything except the commission problem.
Yeah, yeah. And you know, um.
I only use it for the commission.
Candice was, made a really good video about it the other day, and I was like, can I share it out? And she's like, no, it's not ready yet. So she's got a really good T-bar video that she made the other day, and um, and if she gets it done, I'll send it to you guys because it's, it's pretty good. But she, like, I, me, I never learned it through T-bar, but yeah, it is helpful to remember that way. But yeah, for sure. Now, if you wanna check yourself, you could say, okay, a hundred and thirty-four thousand times six percent, just to make sure you did it right, and you should get the, roughly the um, eight thousand, one hundred. Right? So let's see, let's find another good one. Okay, we're looking for math. What's that?
Can we do discount points?
Oh, yeah, discount points, yeah. That's a, that's, let me think where I would have a good discount points under here.
I, I got a good one.
Oh, you do have one that you wanna do?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, let me get the whiteboard and we'll write it out. So go ahead, uh, tell it to me.
Okay, okay, okay. Uh, if, if you are required to pay one point five discount points.
Oh, I know this question.
Oh, you know this one?
This one about, yeah.
This one's on the test.
Yeah.
This one's definitely on the test, and I, I got this.
Go ahead and tell me the rest of it. I don't like have it memorized, but I've seen it before, yeah.
Okay, if you're required to pay one point one discount points, a one point loan origination fee.
Okay.
Comma a point, a zero point seven five, that's how it's written out, so point seven five. Um, private mortgage insurance premium, PMI.
Okay.
And three thousand eight hundred for other closing costs and prepaid's.
Okay.
How much cash will you need? Those, a ninety percent conventional loan
Okay.
On your new one thousand four hundred with one hu- one thousand four hundred, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Home.
Okay.
And it, and it's the last.
Going on here. This is like.
I know. I hate it. I hate it. And it, hold up, hold up, there's one more thing.
Yeah.
It, and they have something in common that say you have pre-listed deposit eight thousand in earnest money in the escrow uh, officer. So that's, that's. Yeah, that's crazy.
How much? Eight thousand what?
Eight thousand in earnest money with the escrow officer.
Okay.
So that's what they put in the escrow account, the earnest money deposit.
Okay, now. The, there's two steps to this. Well, one breakdowns of this, right? So it's a hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollar home. All right, Brandon, you still here?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, Brandon. I'm gonna put you on the spot because we're gonna go around. We're gonna all do this together. So for a hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollar home, if you're taking out a ninety percent convention, he's pretty good math, Brandon's pretty good math. So ninety percent conventional loan, how much down payment do you gotta have? We'll make little notes here.
Any percent, which I'm all in the, so ten percent, uh, no. Oh, you're talking about how much money or just the percentage?
Fourteen thou- he would have to have ten percent down, so he would have to have fourteen thousand eight hundred.
Okay, okay, so I was.
Now, so we know he needs that. We know that he is going to also, we also need to know what, what, we have to think about which one of these things are based on the loan amount, and which one of these things are based on the purchase price. So the purchase price, we need to know for the down payment. But when we're talking about discount points, we all know that discount points are based off of the loan amount, right?
Yes.
What is our loan amount? That's the big thing. So our loan amount, we're being able to borrow ninety percent of the purchase price, right? So one hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred is our purchase price, ninety percent. Our loan amount, ninety percent of our, of our purchase price equals one hundred and thirty-three thousand, six fifty. Everybody with me so far?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, now that we know our loan amount, we know that we have to pay our discount points based on our loan amount, right? Our origination fee, that's also a point based on our loan amount. So let's do those two. So we have one point five percent plus another one point, so we're gonna have to pay two and a half percent, right? So what is the two and a half percent of our loan amount? I'm gonna put it over here, and so we don't get it confused. I'm gonna put it over here. I got three thousand, three hundred and forty-one, twenty-five for this one and this one together. Is that what?
Oh, you put that to, what, you added up together or what?
I just did to make it easier, but you could do one and a half percent and one percent, and then just add it together, whichever one's easier. I just combined the two together because I know I need to pay two and a half points.
Okay.
Origination fee and one and a half pers- one and a half.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Now. Go ahead, sorry.
And when you got the, not to go backtrack, I must have missed it. When you got the fourteen thousand, when you did ten percent of that, you took ten percent of the one hundred and forty-eight thousand, the, the actual.
Yeah. I took the, yeah, because the down payment would be ten percent of the, of the sales price, yep. Now, PMI fee, that's point seven five percent, right? Not just point seven five. Does it say point seven five percent? Does it say point seven five percent in the question, I'm guessing?
Mm-hmm, yep.
That's what it says, okay.
The PMI would be part of, like, it's point seven five of the loan amount, right, or is it the whole?
Right, so in that one, but it's point seven five percent.
Okay, percent, yeah.
Not point seven five of the loan amount.
Okay.
I think that's what they're, that's how they usually charge PMI, so one thirty-three six fifty times point seven five percent would be one thousand two dollars and thirty-seven cents. That's for the PMI part. Right? You see why? Because it's seventy-five, it's point seven five percent of the loan amount, not point seven five, right? Because that would be a lot. Yeah, so, so yeah, so then we have thirty-eight hundred dollars for other crap that we have to pay, we have to add that in there too. And so let's add all this up. So far, we've got to pay the three thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-five cents, plus one thousand two dollars and thirty-seven cents, plus thirty-eight hundred dollars. So altogether, I'm up to eight thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-two cents in all of my incidentals here. Plus, I've got to come up with my down payment, which we are gonna carry up here, right? Which is fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, so he's got to bring that to closing. So plus fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, so now I'm up to twenty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-two cents. But, forget, what do we gotta?
Add that?
We gotta give credit for that.
Yeah.
Subtract it, yeah. We gotta give him credit, because he's already paid eight thousand of it in advance with that earnest money. So take away that eight thousand dollars, and we're left with fourteen thousand nine ninety-three sixty-two. That was a workout, is that right? Is that what they have?
Yep, that's the, yep, that's what they have, yep.
Yeah, and then we would, they probably have just rounded up to fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-four, but.
Ninety-three.
Okay, they rounded.
Well, sixty-three, sixty-three, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, so what do you guys think? If you were presented with that question, now that we've worked it out, do you think you'd be able to pick it apart? So I kind of map it, when I see them, I'm like, okay, there's a lot going on here, so I think, okay, well, which things do I need to know? The true sales price for, you know, the down payment, and which things are based off the loan amount, which is the points, origination fees, the PMI.
That's where I get confused with the point, so you just add those points up together, that's.
Yeah, or you.
Something like that.
If that, if that's, but you could also do hundred and thirty-three thousand six fifty times one and a half percent, then a hundred and thirty-three thousand six fifty times one percent. You could do them on different line items, I just kind of cut corners there and added them both together, because I knew, I knew that these are both the, the one point for the loan and one and a half points for the discount points, I just took, added up these total number of points. And remember that each point cost the borrower one percent of the loan amount. So, that's a good question. So I want to do a little bit with you guys, be- before we have to go on, um, on some practice questions, not math, I know math is a good thing to talk about, but I want to show you a couple more things that I think are important. Um, let me find um, another one that people are tending to miss, property ownership. We kind of ignore property ownership.
Oh.
It's a smaller portion of our test, right? But everybody seems to struggle with deeds and titles.
Oh.
Go through like a few deeds and title questions with you guys. I know, I think Tara and I did this the other day when we were talking about different lien types. I know Brandon and I have talked about it. So a lien that can take priority over all other liens is what?
Proper tax lien.
Property tax.
Yeah, a property tax lien. And is a property tax lien a voluntary or an involuntary lien?
That's an invo-.
Involuntary.
Yeah, involuntary, because remember, our voluntary liens are typically like mortgages. And, um, that's pretty much it. Pretty much everything else is involuntary, your property tax liens, your mechanics liens, your judgment liens, that, all those things come whether you like them or not. So that one was a pretty easy one, let's see. So Kathy, here we are with the life estate. Kathy grants a life estate to Jack for as long as Pam lives. Brandon, I think me and you did this the other day, kind of something like that.
Yeah.
Measuring life in this case is Pam's, not Jack's. What kind of life estate are we talking here?
It will kill me.
Eight for years.
Now, this one, because Pam's and not Jack's, that's the per auter v, right? When it's the measuring life is somebody else. The example that I, that Brandon and I were talking about, like, say that Samantha's my sister, and our mom is sick. And I say, okay, Samantha, I've got this house in, I don't know, wherever, California, and that's where you and mom live. So, you, you can live in this house, you can have a life estate, you can own the house for as long as mom's alive, she's the measuring wife. But when mom passes away, it's gonna come back to me. So normally, the measuring life would be Samantha if I'm giving her a life estate, right? But in this situation, Samantha's only allowed to have the life estate for as long as mom's alive, not for as long as Samantha's alive. So that's what makes it per auter v. A traditional life estate would just be for those, you give it to the person for as long as they're alive. Um, let's see, I think Jaws here, let me. Okay, sorry, we lost, I didn't remember that. Okay, so you're, when you're talking about life estate, you're always talking about the life estate ends when the person who was granted the life estate dies. Right? They can't leave it in their will to anybody else. They can't do anything with it, once they're dead, that's it, and whatever the person who gave the life estate said would happen next is what happens next. So if it comes back to me, if I gave Samantha that life estate and it comes back to me when mom dies, I'm a reversionary interest, it's reverting back to me, right? But if I told Samantha she could live there as long as mom's alive, but then when mom dies, it goes on to our sister Sally, Sally's the remainderman, right? She's getting the remaining interest. So the life estate ends with the measuring life's ending. Nobody gets to put it in their will. It's predetermined what happens when that person, whoever that is, dies. Now, another good thing on here, that isn't really part of this question, but it's a good thing to remember that everybody always has trouble with, is estate for years. Estate for years is a type of lease. And, okay, Brandon, do you remember this one? When, what's the thing with estate for years? What do we know that makes it unique? An estate for years.
It's a, um,
So it doesn't have to be for years though, right?
No, it can be like a, like a six month, but it's.
Yeah.
Right, it, or one month, but it's not.
Like a summer rental?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, like a summer rental, like, um, on the last day of that lease, whatever that is, I don't expect to see you anymore, I want you to get gone, right? So, an estate for years, it, it has an end date, so look for, if there is a lease that has a specific date, like till June fifteenth or whatever, that's usually estate for years. Periodic tendency is another way that we can give a lease, but in periodic tendency, the expectation is that it will continue on. Right? That it will continue on, and that, um, you, or that not necessarily continue on, but there's an open end to it. We may do another six-month lease, we may do a month-to-month lease, we may go, you know, we may sign another one-year lease. If you're a good tenant, I'm a good landlord, we're getting along good, I want you to stay, we would continue on with it. That would be the periodic tendency, but estate for years has that deadline at the end. Okay, now, here's a great question. Which of the following deed forms may con- oh, it's freezing up on me here, looks like it's acting up, sorry if the internet's been goofy today. Which of the following deed forms may convey no ownership rights at all? Which one might give you nothing?
Quick claim. Quick claim deed.
Right, the quick claim deed. Because it has no warranties. I'm telling you, whatever interest I have in the property, I'm giving it to you, and that's it.
What is a sheriff deed?
So in some states, like where I live in Ohio, the sheriff would auction off a foreclosed property and give you what we, what they call a sheriff's deed. It's basically like a, um, a, uh, um, my mind just went blank.
Like you, like you gotta get.
Like a special or a limited warranty deed. He, he wouldn't really be giving you much warranty about the title, the, whether the title's good or bad, he has no history with it. He's just auctioning it off on behalf of the bank and he's saying, okay, do your own title search, find out what you do about, what you want about the title. I'm not giving you any guarantees, much of any guarantees with this title, very many. Now, remember, the general warranty deed though, the general warranty deed for the buyer is the most, most broad, it's best for the buyer, right? So if I give a buyer a general warranty deed, it goes all the way back to when the house was built. All those warranties that I'm giving are all the way back to when this house was built. So like my example that I use is like my house was built in the seventies, I think seventy-two, so if I gave a general warranty deed to Samantha, and I said, okay, I'm giving you a general warranty deed, I'm telling you that I'll stand behind the fact that the title is good going all the way back to nineteen seventy-two, even though I've only lived here twenty years. But if instead I gave Heather a simple or a limited warranty deed, the interchangeable terms there, depending on where you're at in the country. If, if I give you a simple or a, 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 or a special, excuse me, special or a limited warranty deed, I'm only giving it, giving you warranties that the title is good during the time that I lived here. Not all the way back fifty years, I've lived here twenty-two years, that's how far I'm warning the title. Most of our residential sales are gonna come with a general warranty deed. But sometimes we have like bank foreclosures or auctions or some weird situation, estate sale or something like that, where they would give the only the special warranty deed. So we kind of talked about those, so, um, okay. A part of the government survey method, we talked about this one today too, containing thirty-six sections is called what? What has thirty-six sections in that government rectangular survey?
The township.
Township, yes, six across, six, row of six down, row of six across. Now, each one of those sections has how many acres?
Six hundred.
Forty?
Six forty, yes, exactly. So, don't get your different memory things mixed up between this and the other. Everybody always gets this mixed up, it's six hundred and forty acres is how many acres there are in a section of a township. And forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty are how many square feet there are in an acre.
Yeah, that's.
So remember, like Joe's trick is what, four old men driving thirty-five and a sixty is how he remembers the forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet in an acre. And there's like a lot of memes and jokes about this on the internet, like everybody, that's the one thing, that forty-three, five, sixty, everybody seems to remember that from real estate class, like you forget everything else, for some reason, that sticks with you.
Right.
Okay, this legal description starts from a reference point called a corner beginning, and gives the directions and distances to the boundaries, what's it called?
I get confused on this one. I was gonna say lot.
About, meets and bounds.
Meets and bounds, Heather had that one, that was meets and bounds, yes, meets and bounds. When I'm physically describing what I'm seeing, I'm going out in my yard, and I'm walking the perimeter of my yard, and I'm telling you what I'm seeing, right? And if you live in the New England states, you might have seen, well, it's not only the New England states, but it's popular there where they'll put those metal stakes in the ground as their points of reference for this, that's what that is. So, that's what that is. So like if you've ever, like in New York, New Jersey, Rhode Island, this kind of places, they tend to use that a lot. Um, another thing, lot and block legal description typically with subdivisions, guys. So like, I walk out in my yard, that's my lot, the street I live on with my neighbors is my block. And let's see, um, those of us who are from southern states know that a neighborhood is called a plat. Okay, and the plat map, at least here in Ohio, Southern Ohio, in Kentucky, it's called a plat. So a subdivision is called a plat, and so the plat map is the map of the subdivision. So, lot and block legal description would have a plat map. Meets and bounds would have the description. Remember, with meets and bounds, we always want to close that circle, we describe, 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 come back to where we started. We just, with our, the point that we begin describing at, and the point that we end describing our description at on meets and bounds has to be the same, we gotta close the loop. So yeah, that one's kind of fun. Now, let me give you guys one more thing on this lot and block legal description, all this kind of stuff, let me ask you. So, we'll go switch my gears and go back to the whiteboard. If we are looking at this whiteboard, and we see our government rectangular survey system, thirty-six squares, right? So we got our thirty-six squares over here, just pretend this is thirty-six squares, and within this. Where is section one in this township? Where would section one be located?
Northeast, right?
Yeah, the top right, the northeast, right? Way up here in the corner, the opposite of the way we're used to reading, which is weird, right? So we go over six, so it's one, two, three, four, five, six, then we're gonna drop down a line. And then this is seven, we go back over, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, this is twelve. We drop down a line, this is thirteen, now thirteen coming back, so we zigzag back and forth, remember? Start in the opposite corner of we, the way we would read a book, and we go over six, down one, back six, down one. Zigzag back and forth until we get all the way to thirty-six. If I asked you, so if this is section one, what, um, what section is due east of section one? Yeah, Brandon can't be fooled on that one, he knew that one right away. Yeah, because this is kind of confusing, so these things stack next to each other, y'all. Yeah, so this is, so this is one, two, three, four, five, six, this is one, and then, so it's a bunch of boxes on this giant graph paper on the earth, right? That's how government rectangular survey method works, so remember the sequence of how it's laid out on the page, because they may ask you which section is directly north of section seven. And it would be six, right? So that might be a question on the test, so always remember how this is laid out, and if you have to, draw it for yourself. You know, kind of draw it out there. Yeah, so that's government rectangular survey system. So I kind of got a little bit off track on that, but I wanted to show that to you guys as a reminder, because that one's kind of, that always confused me when I was in class. I was always like, I hated that government rectangular survey when I was studying for my test. The first time, I was like, oh my god, this is crazy. So, thank you, John, man, did he come in? Oh, hey, Ja, how are you? We were just talking about government rectangular survey system. Um, okay, so Jim is buying Sandy's home, as well as her lawnmower. Uh, hang on one second. Okay, yeah, we're doing it. So Jim is buying Sandy's home, as well as her lawnmower, her microwave, her Persian cat, her sewing machine. Sandy gives a Jim a deed for her home, and for the personal item, she gives him a what?
Bill of sale.
Bill of sale, yeah.
Yeah, that one's pretty easy, right? Now, when we know what bill of sale is, what's alluvium? Anybody remember alluvium?
That has to do with like the rocks and wearing away and a.
Yeah, exactly. Alluvium is like, so I lived up, let's say that I live upstream from Samantha, and I live at the other end of the river, okay? So Samantha has erosion going on on her property line, and it erodes part of her soil, and it gets into the river, it's just salty water floating around, trying to find its way down to my shoreline to increase it. Now, my shoreline, when it increases, is called accretion. But the alluvium is the salty water floating around trying to find its new home, that's alluding. So, all of those words that have to do with water like that, they all kind of sound alike. You know, accretion, alluvium, but remember erosion? The eroded, the eroded dirt becomes alluvium, floats along, finds its new home, becomes accretion. And it increases our shoreline. So, when is title? This is a, a common type question, when is title to real estate actually transferred?
When the deeds are recorded?
A, a, well, when the.
Yeah, somebody said a. So yeah, close to the, we do want to record the deed because it's good to do that. So that the world can have constructive notice that we're the owner of the home, right? But when it tech, when the title, remember, title is this concept of ownership. When the title is transferred, is when I take the deed and I hand it over to you, and you re- receive it, I deliver to you and you accept it. At that point, technically, ownership transfers. Now, some states are gonna re- require you to report it, they're gonna have rules about how you record it or whatever, but. Now, some states are going to require you to report it. They're going to have rules about how you record it or whatever, but on the basic, most basic level, that's when the title transfers. And remember, we recorded at the courthouse to give everybody constructive notice. I know that I own my house. Why do I have to record my deed at the courthouse? Well, so that everybody else knows. So there's no scamming going on, so no weirdness goes on. So there's no break in the chain of title. We always want to record our deed at the courthouse. Give everybody constructive notice. Now, if I go down, okay, Samantha, I'm going to put you on the spot. If I go down to the courthouse, let's say you recorded your deed at the courthouse. So you've given the world constructive notice that you own your home and I go down to the courthouse and I look up your deed and I read it. Now, what kind of notice do I have?
Actual notice?
Yeah, actual notice, because I know it for a fact. I know that Samantha owns this home because I've seen it with my own eyes. I understand it to be true. Now, if I had said before, oh, I had no idea Samantha owned the home and I use this as an excuse for something in court, the judge is going to say, well, too bad, too sad. You should have gone and looked. She recorded at the courthouse. We expect you to know this. She gave constructive notice. So they're not going to feel sorry for me. But once I actually see it for myself, that's actual notice. So, yep, yep. Um, okay. Let's see. Oh, here, this is good. The following are sufficient legal description for a deed, except which one would these, would, which one of these would not be good to have no legal description in our deed?
Would it be the street name and house number?
Right, that's what I give the Domino's guy. I don't actually put that in my deed, right? That's how they find me to bring me my pizza, but it's not going to be in my actual deed. In my deed, I have got to have, you know, the legal description in there. Now, remember, when we build a brand-new subdivision, I don't know if you guys have ever paid attention because there's all this new construction all over the place and we get busy and we don't even notice it anymore. But when we do, when we build a brand-new subdivision, the legal description is determined by a kind, a, um, a profession, I should say. Which jo, whose job is it? What's the name of the job of the person who goes out and does those boundary lines and writes those legal descriptions up?
Surveyor.
Surveyor, exactly. So when they do the survey, they're doing that so that they can actually make the legal description in the deed so it's accurate for our property lines. So we don't have any arguments or disagreements or anything like that about property lines. Now, let's say that my neighbor decides to up and put a fence on my, on, over on my property line. And I realize that. I'm like, ah, I do a survey and I realized that my neighbor has his fence on my side of property lines, in my yard. What's the word for that?
Encroachment?
Encroachment, yes, Heather, encroachment, yeah. So he's encroaching on my property and I would know for sure that he was encroaching on my property, going back to that whole idea of a survey again, because I had a survey done. And so we want to make sure that we have those surveys done when we're going to be putting up different things around, like building a building or whatever. I've seen whole barns beyond somebody else's land. You know, things like that. Things go wrong, especially in old houses. Um, so that's why the surveys are important. And then a lot of times they real, realign the different property lines and things change. So every now and then the county will make us have a new survey. Okay, the chain of deeds or other documents showing transfer of title of real property from one person to the next as disclosed in the public record. What do we call that?
Change of title?
Yeah, Tara, that's right. Chain of title.
Okay.
Chain of title is part of a bigger term, abstract of title, right? The abstract of title is going to tell me about everything that's ever transpired with that deed. The change, the, uh, change of ownership from one person to the next, right? It's going to tell me about, um, all the different liens that have come on and off the property, been released and added. It's going to tell me about all the sequence of people who the property has conveyed, been conveyed to. So the chain of title is part of that bigger abstract. The chain of title specifically, you're right, is the cha, is the chain that goes from person to person. If we are missing a person in that chain, if somebody's show, somebody's staying on the deed that's not supposed to be there, we can't figure out when that title transferred. We've got a whole, a missing link. That creates what?
Abstract. Abstract.
Uh, well, we, we would see it in the abstract, but it, it, but the problem it creates, we call it the cloud, right?
Oh, the cloud on the title.
Cloud on the title. Now, let's say that we have somebody showing up on the deed that never got released, that we know was supposed to be released. And we look everywhere for them and we can't find him. Normally, we would find that person, have them sign a quick claim deed, right? Clearing up that chain title or clean up that um, cloud on the title. But what if we can't find him? Or is all lost? Are we just stuck with a messed up title forever? Or what can we do? What's the term for that? It's a court hearing that we do.
Sue, um, sue, um, hold up, hold up.
Quiet claim, um, oh, what was it called?
Yep, that's right, Tara. Quiet title action. That's right. Quiet title action. We would file a quiet title action where we would go to the courts. And we would say, look, I've done everything that I can to find Brandon and he's showing up on title, but we've looked all over for him and we can't find him to get him to sign a quick claim deed. Then they would do a series of things. They would do like public, public advertisements. They would send, um, uh, certified letters. They do everything they could to make sure that we've done everything we can to find Brandon. If Brandon doesn't step forward and say, yes, yes, I claim this and we can't find him anywhere, then eventually the judge would say, okay, we've done our due diligence. We've done what we should. No one's coming forward and, and laid a claim to this property. So we're going to give you a quiet title action. Your title's good to go. Right? You don't want to do that. That's like a last resort sign kind of thing. I've only seen it done like once in twenty years in real estate. And it's expensive and time-consuming and all these things. So we would all, we always want to make sure that we keep the title clean as we can, because that saves a lot of hassle. Another thing that happens a lot of times, especially when people write land contracts that get recorded or owner financing things, or it's a small town bank and they've gone out of business or whatever the situation may be. Sometimes we have old liens on properties from the past that never got released, right? So these are all things that the title company is going to look for, the attorney is going to look for when he's doing that title search to make sure that they're not transferring this title with any unknown clouds. Okay, so this type of legal description in a deed would reference natural monuments. What do we call it?
Government survey?
D.
What do you think? Meets and bounds?
There you go, Brandon. Yeah, yes. So meets and bounds is like natural monuments. What they mean is like they might say the giant oak tree. There are old deeds out there that'll say, turn left at the covered or go three hundred feet from the covered bridge or the oak tree or whatever. Unfortunately, the oak tree is gone. Then you're like, oh, but a lot of those historic deeds, because they had no other way to really describe where their property boundaries were, that's why nowadays we put those metal pins in the ground. Back in the day, they would have all kinds of craziness in them. Um, okay, Vinny is not allowed to put a fence around his yard due to a deed blank put in the deed by the prior owner.
Covenant.
Restriction?
Yeah.
A restriction? Okay, the covenant is the, is actual writing to the deed.
So, well, the, the really, the deed, the deed restriction and the deed covenant, the difference really there is a a covenant is a promise, more like it's worded more like a promise, a restriction. Don't do it.
Oh, got.
You're really close.
Got you.
It's kind of nitpicky. Now, if I sign a document in front of a notary and they take their little stamp out and they stamp it, which one of these words has to do with that?
Acknowledgement.
There you go, Tara. Yeah, acknowledge it. Anytime I sign something in front of a notary, they're acknowledging it. They're taking their stamp out, that signing in front of a notary. So when we see acknowledgement, another thing that I would have to sign and many, I've signed when I've sold houses and sellers sign, when we get to the closing table, we're going to sign something that's going to get acknowledged by a notary and it's called an affidavit of title. So affidavit of title, an affidavit is just a sworn statement that I'm saying something's true, right? But sellers sign an affidavit of title, and here's why. Is where, so if I have a title search done for a closing that's happening on September eleventh and they get done with it today on September fifth, they're not going to go out and re, re-search it again before my closing on September eleventh. It's a few days away. But what if the person who's selling the house goes out and does something crazy and takes and, and have something done that creates a lien on the property between now and the eleventh? I wouldn't know. So they would have to sign a sworn statement in front of the notary that would be held up in court that says that between the time of September fifth, when they finished the title search and the eleventh, the day that we're sitting there at the closing table, they're swearing that they haven't done anything that could, could create a lien or an encumbrance like that on the property. That's an affidavit of title.